The meeting is now called to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
This is Becker.
Yes, here.
Mr. Cancro. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lax.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Seeler.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
President Simmons.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted at the board offices located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the New York Star Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone, and happy holidays. Our last meeting of 2017, if you can believe this. And we'll begin with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, President Simmons. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students at Warrenstorfer Elementary School. The art teachers of these talented students are Matilda Meadow, Delia Elhaj, Josatari is the principal. Earlier this month, the EBEF held a Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair. I'd like to thank the many teachers, students, and parents who helped make the event so successful. Churchill Junior High School has been involved with wreaths across America for the last two years. Assistant Principal Kathy Dragonetti is the coordinator of this effort, and she, along with members of our school staff, friends, and family, goes to Arlington National Cemetery to help with the placement of wreaths in honor of our veterans. They began collections during the week leading up to Veterans Day, and had such overwhelming support from our school community, they were able to donate over 400 wreaths each over the last two years. I have some great news from the music department. Thirty-two East Brunswick students, grades nine through 12, recently went through a stringent audition process and were accepted into regional band, chorus, orchestra, and wind ensemble. They will all have the opportunity to audition for all-state ensembles in early 2018. Rising sixth graders have an opportunity to select a world language to study when they come to Hammerhill. They have options to study Spanish, German, Italian, or French. Mr. Lavery and Mr. Keenan rallied the World Language Department to host a World Language Expo on Friday, December 9. World Language teachers invited their current students to showcase and share what they were learning in their German, Italian, French, or Spanish classes. Dr. Gaskell, Hammerhill Principal, and Ruth Chang, World Language Supervisor, welcomed our curious fifth graders and their families in the HMS cafeteria. In sports, Eric Meyer was named the New Jersey Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Elementary Teacher of the Year. Frank Noppenberger is being inducted into the Directors of Athletics Association of New Jersey Hall of Fame. Lauren Krensky was first-team All-State Soccer Goalie by NJ.com. And Mitch Palito earned his 100th career wrestling victory.
That's pretty cool.
That is cool. Just a reminder, Friday, December 22 is a single-session day with lunch. Schools will be closed from December 25 through January 1 for winter recess. Schools will resume on Tuesday, January 2. I would like to express my heartfelt good wishes to the Board, the community, and our staff for a healthy and happy New Year. Thank you.
So everybody's looking forward to January 2 now, right?
January 2 with a forecast of snow.
Can't get better. All right. Next, I'm going to combine the public hearing on violence, vandalism, and substance abuse and the good of the cause for the public, where members of the public are invited to express themselves on school-related matters of concern. Comments are limited to five minutes, and to protect the privacy of all students and staff, if you have concerns regarding individual students and staff, please address them first with the appropriate administrative staff. So if Mr. Figueroa would lead off the public hearing on violence, vandalism, and substance abuse, after which, if anyone's here to speak on either matter, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. On annual basis, school districts are required to report at a public hearing the number of acts of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse that occurred in the previous school year. This report also meets the federal requirement of identifying persistently dangerous schools. We report incidents of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse to the Board on a monthly basis. And at this meeting, I'd like to review a summary of the incidents that occurred during the 2016-2017 school year. In terms of violence, the total incidents of violence, which would be fights, threats, assaults, were up from 33 incidents to 34 in the 2016-2017 school year. Vandalism incidents were up from seven to 11, however, there were no costs incurred by the district. Substance abuse, the incident counts remain the same from the previous year at 28 incidents of substance abuse. In terms of police notifications stemming from incidents in our schools, police were notified 45 times in the 2016-2017 school year. Of these notifications, 24 complaints were filed. This is up from the previous year, where there were 41 police notifications and 13 complaints filed. The total violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse were up from 71 to 88 incidents. In terms of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, in 2016-2017, there were 163 total HIB investigations throughout our schools with 37 confirmed HIBs. This is down from 62 from the previous year. There's a few reasons that the investigations and confirmed incidents are lower. That's due to several types of factors. One would be the embedded lessons in the classroom, better education for parents in terms of what HIBs really are, database programs like Sources of Strength, and the Board's support in terms of providing us necessary staff to address HIBs and HIB-related incidents. So we thank you. I'd like to remind you that in terms of HIBs, the numbers tend to be cyclical. So even though we've had a lower amount of HIBs, we still investigate everything, and it's possible that from year to year, they may raise or, you know, go down. That we really have no control over. There are certain activities that were organized in all the schools during Violence Awareness Week to prevent violence and highlight the importance of school safety throughout our schools. In addition to our administrative staff review, they review policies and regulations, safety crisis procedures, and important topics promoting student safety on a regular basis. Some examples of what we have been doing and some programming is Sources of Strength, peer and adult mentoring program activities, Gay-Straight Alliance, Safe Space Pay It Forward Campaign, buddy activities in the elementary schools, Positive Messages, School Spirit Days in the District, Make-A-Wish letters, mentor programs at elementary schools, assembly programs, cultural organizations, peace pledges, StopBullying.gov webinars, cyberbullying programs, Do Now curricular activities that are related to this topic, and also the 21st Century Coaching workshops that we do for all our coaches, and those are mandatory programs. I'm happy to report that due to effective training of our staff, the work performed by our school's security coordinator, Paul Natalicio, and our security officers, our student services supervisor, Danielle Blaylock, who is here this evening, our student assistant specialists, our supervisor of counseling and career readiness, Louise Sultana, our school counselors, nurses, teachers, support staff, our administrators, we've made significant strides in training and in education and in trying to understand what the needs are of our students. But we have more work to do. We're continuously trying to look at new ways and trying to address the needs of our students. It's an ongoing concern, and it's an ongoing focus of ours. And we appreciate the support, of course, from the Board. In summary, the East Brunswick public schools are safe schools, but we continue to look for ways to improve our school climate throughout the district. We're presently working on additional ways to educate students and the community on opioid abuse, which is a problem not only in the county, but in the state, and also, at this time, nationwide concern. We have strong administrators, well-trained student assistant specialists, school counselors, caring teachers, and all of our support staff, wonderful students, and very supportive parents in the district, which all help to make our program a complete program in terms of how we address the needs of our students. And we continue to look for the most proactive approaches to working with our over 8,500 students and our over 1,500 staff members throughout the district.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Dr. Valesky and Mr. Jacoby, at a future meeting, not tonight, it might be helpful just to go over a quick summary of what HIB law requires and what we are required to do, and perhaps just, and Mr. Figueroa's already gone through a whole list of what we're doing, but maybe, again, to touch on the key players here and what we are doing to educate, just so folks are reminded what our obligations are.
Sure.
And how serious these rules are, and then that every district has them, of course, because it's a state mandate. Any questions? Any discussion?
The answer from question. With the HIB, you said it went down, it was 163, 37 confirmed cases. And last year, so we went down from 62. Was 62 the number of confirmed cases or the allegations?
Sixty-two were the number of confirmed cases last year.
And do you know what was the number of filed complaints?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm going to tell you, it had to be about 170 or 180, because I'll get that for the Board.
So similar number?
Similar numbers, yeah.
Like a third, yeah.
And I think the important thing to look at when we talk about investigations is that we're required to investigate all possibilities. So if our investigations start to go down, that may mean some of our educational programming is working in terms of whether things are conflict or HIB, which is why I think a lot of, a lot of questions usually come from. Is this a conflict or is this an HIB?
The law first came out years ago, when we first started being told we had to investigate everything. I know it was a, I was curious to see whether or not those numbers are coming any closer together.
Yes, they are. When we started out, and we're in our, what, 60-year now, we were in the 200s for investigations, well into the 200s, 280, I want to say, 270, with quite a bit, you know, of attention to each one. So through education and through the support, obviously, of the Board and Dr. Valesky's leadership, it's been terrific. We've worked, we still have work to do, so we'll continue to do.
I think one of the things that I've seen over the last couple of years, and hopefully you can confirm this, because it's my observation, a couple of years ago, we probably had people using the HIB nomenclature as a flag to say, yes, you know, I want this investigated, so there was bullying or it was HIB. I've seen more reflective, more intellectually-based discussions, and not as emotional with parents and some of the people that we deal with when their students get in these situations. It seems to be a different conversation now, focused on trying to remediate a behavior, rather than people just wanting to cast a wide net of, yeah, I believe my child was bullied. And once they say that, that triggers a lot of, a lot of activities in the district when people do that. But I think that we're seeing more thoughtful discussions going on. I don't know if...
I would agree. And I think a lot has to do with the work at all levels, but the elementary level, we've really tried to explain, to discuss, to talk about what the B word is, and, you know, what it really is with conflict, and how we can, you know, hopefully work together and to discuss, you know, differences and, you know, but as I said before, it's cyclical. There are going to be years that we just happen to have more investigations and others like this year, this past year, where we were down in terms of the numbers.
Just one quick question. We have, you've listed for us tonight some of the programs that we use for, you know, socially-emotional learning and in an effort to try to make a difference and to bring down the number of HIBs. When these programs say that they are evidence-based, are any of them telling us that they have, in fact, had an impact on, you know, the raw numbers of HIB complaints?
Well, that's a great question. I think what, when we talk about evidence-based programs, and we really look at programs like Sources of Strength and things that we can look to other districts, other schools throughout the country to see where the numbers have been and what they do. And I think with all of our programs, and some of them are focused more on the adults, some of them are focused more on the students at the elementary, some are, you know, depends on, and I think when you put these puzzles together, you really do see that that educational component is bringing down the numbers. Now, as we have, and we've seen this a lot too, and we just talked about this as well today, you know, we are a big district. We have an influx of people moving into the district, which is fantastic. But a lot of people coming into the district may not have had the educational piece of what HIB is and what the process is that we do here. So we always have to continuously reach out. I know part of our transition plans and our programs do address that. So, you know, we're looking at putting that puzzle together. It's not one program, but I think we have some of the big ones, as I mentioned before, the Sources of Strength, and some of the assembly programs, and some of the informational nights that we do at the schools. We've gotten away from the scare tactics. The data shows that scare tactics and, you know, emotional events only last a short time. We need education and follow-up and mentoring, and these are the kind of programs we have seen, and not only our district. It's been successful throughout, so.
Okay, it's just, you know, sometimes when you take a look at various programs, you know, you see that it's evidence-based or based in science or whatever, and you're not really sure what part of that is evidence, you know? So anyway, it's helpful to, you know, clarify those things.
Anyone else? This is now the public hearing and good of the cause, so if anyone has any remarks on either, anyone wants to address the Board or talk about the hearing, please come to the podium. We're seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and close the good of the cause for the public. May I have a motion for our Board of Education and Facilities agenda items?
So, second.
Motion by Mrs. Becker, second, by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is this the entire agenda?
No, Board of Education and Facilities only.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, fun. Yep. Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
President Simmons.
Yes, motion carries. I will remind, for the Financial Services items, I'm going to ask for motion on, everyone should, if you're going to approve it, say approve, except, abstain to the extent it concerns me personally. We'll do it that way. It's not a roll call. Okay, so may I have a motion for our Financial Services item?
So, second.
Motion by Mrs. Becker, second, by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion? The secretary please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes, I need to abstain on two things, on purchase order number P-1803347, and then I also need to abstain on four payments to Medical Staffing Services Incorporated.
Noted. Mrs. Chu.
Yes, but abstaining to the extent that my name is on it. Is that the right way to say it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Noted. Mrs. Hong.
Yes, abstain from the board member payment on the bill list with my name on it.
Noted. Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes, abstaining on P-1803371.
Noted. Mr. Seeler.
Yes, abstaining on P-1803372.
Noted. Mrs. Shaw.
Yes, with the exception of purchase order P-1803373.
Noted. And President Simmons.
Yes, except to the extent that it concerns me.
Noted.
I'm your favorite, however, Johnny.
Always.
Okay, motion carries, yes. That was fun. May I have a motion for our Human Resources and Student Services and Transportation Services items?
Someone, second.
Motion by Mrs. Becker, second, by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion?
Let's also note that there is an addendum for Human Resources.
There's an addendum for Human Resources.
That's a big one.
Did I get a motion? I got a motion. Okay. Oh, any discussion? I have a motion for Mrs. Becker, second, by Mrs. Shaw, and then you had pointed out the addendum. Any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
President Simmons.
Yes, motion carries. We do have a need, well, actually, there's no old business. Committee reports, organization reports, information on good of the cause. We'll start with the high school. Kush, what's going on at the high school?
Well, to start, Alumni Day is tomorrow. Our EB alumni will be visiting the high school and talking to the high schoolers about, they'll be meeting with our students, giving them advice about what college is like and what to expect. I know the high schoolers, including myself, are particularly excited about this because it's a chance to meet old friends and gain advice during a crucial time in our college admission process. At the same time, the high school is having a spirit week, where each day of the week is dedicated for something for the students to do in order to showcase our school spirit during the holiday season. We've had a candy cane day and an ugly sweatshirt day, just fun things to brighten up the mood for the holiday season. And in line with the holiday season spirit, I wanted to mention the great work being done by our English teachers and the donation drive this year, and they've done this every year. They've succeeded in raising thousands of dollars, all by students, and that money is designated towards a family or child in need. Basically, the English teachers are encouraging our students to donate, and then they lead those students in using those donations to go get gifts, and those gifts are designated towards specific families or children in need. All of these things have been a great way to lead up to winter break. Students are relaxing a bit now and are ready to spend time with their family over the break. And if you're a senior, you're also going to be working on college applications. I know a few days ago, for many students, Rutgers University decisions came out. So for the people that got accepted, that was a really exciting time for taking that first step in finally being able to get admitted into a college and take that first step in higher education. So it was a...
It's exciting times. Excellent. Now, the Alumni Day, if I remember, has often been early January. So this year, it's a little bit earlier, right?
Yeah, I was kind of surprised to hear that.
Yeah, well, okay. That's all right. It'll be kind of fun still.
Maybe, maybe they thought they'd get more kids, because kids are just coming home from college in early January, a lot of them, since they're home for like, you know, eight months.
As long as they have it.
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter, as long as you're in. It's good.
They are. They're, it's, they go to school for three, when you go to college.
Hey, you know, I went to a challenging school.
No, you can't go more than a month.
We had a January term, so.
Without having a break, so don't worry.
Sorry about that, Mrs. Shaw. Mrs. Shaw didn't have any kind of winter break in school, did you?
No. Didn't get any presents at Christmas time either.
Wow. Now you've just turned the temperature down.
Yeah, I know, I know.
All right, well, any, any good, good of the cause, besides the high school? Mrs. Reese.
I have two items for today. Earlier this month, it was National, let's see if I say this correctly, Computer Science Education Week, and we honored it here in East Brunswick the Arrow Code. And I was very thankful to be able to go visit two schools, thanks to our administration and to Andy Scanlon, Nick Electronica, and I went into Bowne and Frost. And a very kind host at Bowne was Mr. Tomaso, the media specialist and technology literacy teacher, and she did a great job with, they used Google, and it was a Google sanctioned activity where the kids animate and make the Google logo interactive. So it was pretty exciting to see them all personalize the Google logo. And there's a contest, actually a national contest that prepares them for that if they're interested in moving further. So it was a lot of fun. And then at Frost, it was Angry Birds, so you couldn't lose with that. I mean, it was coding using video games, so nobody had to be told to turn on their computers, you know? They were right to it, and it was kindergarten, third grade, and it's teaching, you know, sequence skills, logical reasoning, and they're having fun at the same time. So it was just a great lesson and a lot of fun to see. And we're, you know, next year, we're hoping to have even more schools get involved with that. So it was, and Code.org offers all this for free, and our teachers are wonderful. They're using all the materials. The media specialists are doing such a good job with the coding.
It just, I remember that we used to get really excited in elementary school when they brought out the construction paper.
I know, and the scissors.
But with things that you're going over, right, and the scissors, what you're going over, and the glue and all that, but it's incredible.
It is. And, and you know, they're, especially the kindergarten, I was, I was pretty wowed by the kindergarten. Then you see the fifth graders, and you see what they're able to do at fifth grade, it is amazing. So, and they enjoy it, you know? So that's the big thing. And kids don't look at coding as a scary thing. And so by the time that they're older, the hope is that they may try more difficult material. And then the second one was, I went to my first meeting as liaison to the senior center, so that was a lot of fun. And it turned out to be a big day. It was the retirement of the director, Rachel Steinberg.
Wow.
Who was there for 17 years. So I came at the right time. I had met Rachel years ago because for EBTV, I had done a piece about the senior center. So I knew a lot of the services, the wonderful services they provide, and they have a lot of wonderful activities. And, you know, they, we went through a lot of the different committees and discussion groups. They have a caregivers group, current events, film discussion. So, and they have partnerships with the school. So it just was a nice experience. I wanted to wish her well on behalf of, on her retirement, and wish her all the best. She's done a wonderful job at the senior center.
Wow. Excellent. Mrs. Becker.
I wanted to report on something that the Recreation Park Advisory Board is doing in conjunction with the Department of Recreation. Little preview for you, Kush, they're going to be distributing a survey to high school students. Township is, is really committed, the direct department, to doing what they can to further engage kids and to come up with programs that are relevant and that kids will actually want to participate in. So we have a student rep on the RPA B Board, and she worked very hard with the Department of Recreation and the Board to develop a survey to find out from our high school students what programs would they actually want to see offered, what would, what would they participate in, what programs exist that they like, that they don't like, et cetera. So just want to give kudos to them for really going the extra mile to trying to engage our kids and encourage everybody to fill out the survey.
Yeah, the good of the cause, anything. Mrs. Lax.
I wanted to reiterate the happy holidays, and I just, I want to be personal for a second. So we have wonderful staff at every aspect of this district. We always talk about that. I, in my parental capacity, did two holiday luncheons at two different schools. I decided to play Peter Brady and have to be in two places at once. And I just want to say the only way I accomplished it was from some very interesting helpers. So I had security personnel at one school at 8:00 at night helping me put tablecloths on. And to me, it just goes above and beyond. And then I had another school at 6:00 in the morning, custodians helping me to try and set up. So I just, I think it's nice, because obviously, we do all this, and let's face it, we're parents who've either been in the district, will be in the district, have been in the district. But it's really nice when you see how much our staff cares about the district and each other and wanting to help each other. And so I just thought that was really nice, as they said, because, you know, a lot of times, the teachers get a lot of the applause, which they absolutely should because they are educating, but it's the people that, you know, that touch the kids in our lives in so many other ways. But I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, and best wishes to all.
I just wanted to touch on something Kush said about students receiving acceptance of Rutgers. Also want to congratulate all students that received the early acceptance letters of college last week. So congratulate all students in our system that did that already. Todd, I know Kirsten was one of them. Congratulations.
Thank you, yes. Still glowing a little bit. It still hasn't sunk in, but the whole college thing hasn't sunk in yet.
It will when you get the bill.
That's what I figured somebody was going to say that.
I was going to say that.
Thank you for pouring water on that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's not just the bill, it's Dad. I need the credit card.
I'll have him have his day one day.
He already has a credit card.
Oh, he's had a week. Wait till you see how much books cost.
Okay.
And the stuff at the dorm room?
You know what? We have a need for closed sessions. You know what? We have a need for closed session.
This one's the boy.
Don't you like older support?
That's wonderful.
Lovely. Makes you feel all warm and fuzzy.
I'll tell you, it's awesome. I'm just feeling the warmth. Okay. We do have a need for closed session, so may I have a motion to go into closed session for the items in the printed agenda, which do include case number HMS 1718.010, employee number 218, I'm sorry, 21783, and legal advice.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hong, second by Mrs. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Happy New Year and good night, everyone.